I'm going to use my gavel for fun today. To the April 9, 2024 Board of Education meeting for Arlington Heights District 25. I call the meeting to order for April 9, 2024. Did I say 2025? No, 2024. I told Lana earlier I put on my contacts and not my glasses. So that may be a problem today. But Lana, if you could please call the roll.
Olanichak.
Here.
Nierman.
Here.
Scapalato.
Here.
Jogi.
Here.
Surniglia.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Faso.
Here.
Thank you Lana. Please, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great 旗帜 which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, this evening is exciting. We have many things to celebrate in District 25. And first, we would like to recognize the Arlington Heights All-Star athletes, recognized by the bright T-shirts that we're supposed to see. Participation in the basketball skills competition and the Special Olympics track and games. You help us get started with the celebrations here.
I think Mrs. Kafka has some words to share. Oh, great, yay.
Hi, I'm Colleen Higgins and this is Allison Keough. And together, we've been the directors of the District 25 Special Olympics team for the past three years. And we're extremely proud of all of our athletes and really happy with how this program has grown. We really want to thank all of the amazing athletes and coaches and families for their support and participation. And we're really looking forward to the continued progress of this program. When we began the program in spring of 2024, we had only 12 athletes and we were just doing track and field. And after that first season came the fall and we started offering basketball. And during the fall, we had 16 athletes participate in basketball. And then the following spring, we had 21 athletes participating for track and field that year. This year, we're even more lucky to expand our program even again with, to the middle school, so that the middle school students could practice with their peers and the elementary school students could practice with their peers there. And that option brought us even more new faces at the middle school level. So we had 18 athletes total for this year in basketball, seven middle school and 11 elementary. And this year for track and field, we have 21 athletes, 10 middle school and 11. We're preparing to prepare for the region-wide competition, which is the Sunday, April 14. The opening ceremonies are at 8:00 AM, so we hope to see some of them shine. Ted Nance joined even more after-school programs with confidence within our All-Star program, so they weren't able to be here tonight. But we highlight from our football season and what they've accomplished during track so far.
I did just want to say Allison and Colleen have both been instrumental at starting the program. Allison has shared that she's not coming back as a head coach next year, but we're going to sure bring her in as a volunteer, for sure. But just wanted to thank her because she's really an instrumental. Thank you. And Dr. Jogi and Mr. Scapalato, if you would be willing to step up front, we'd like to call our All-Stars who are here up to the front today, so that you can shake the hand of our board president and receive a token of appreciation from the board for representing District 25. So unfortunately, we don't have any of our athletes. All right. How about our coaches? If our coaches could all come forward, you'd come up, please. And I'd like to also share appreciation with our Board of Education. It was a couple of years ago, three years ago, that the board said, can we do more for our students? And we came to with a proposal of creating these teams. That proposal came with money. And you said, it's well worth it. Many of you, I think all of you, have been to a Special Olympics event, whether it was basketball or track and field. For those of you that were last year during the rain, I apologize for the weather. But, so thank you to you for that dedication that will, is in our budgets and in our plans for many years to come. And again, thank you to our coaches. We really appreciate you. Thank you.
I told Lana that, you know, we'll. Only is it in our budget, but Special Olympics is in our hearts as well. And we're just blown away with your dedication and the students and the smiles faces. It's always a great time. And we're so thankful for everything that you've done for this district and the students here. Thank you so much. Next, we would recognize the South 8th Grade Girls Volleyball Team, who has turned up this year.
My name is Liz McNamara. I'm actually an NSYO teacher of the Visually Impaired. So I was at Westgate my two years prior to this, and I have a resource room at South this year. So I very much feel like a District 25 employee. And when the volleyball position was open, I was so happy to take it. So I did coach volleyball this year with Diana Cox. She was unable to be here and none of the girls are here either. I know they're. They're very, very committed and busy kids, yeah. There's a track meet at South tonight and they have basketball. And, you know, part of what made them stellar athletes is that involvement. So, yeah, so there's us and the team. Their final record was 17-1. I think in terms of it being my first year coaching, they made it very easy. I think just a really, really great group of kids, not only with volleyball talents, of course, but learning a lot together as well. So we were in three weekend tournaments that they brought home the championship at all three of those. So the Frostbite was at Holmes, the Bulldog was down in Bolingbrook, and then District 25's Sweetheart Tournament hosted by South and Thomas. We won the 8-4A Regional, won the sectional, and then made it down to State in Morton, Illinois, and took, tied for fifth there. So just what a great run and a great memory for them to make it to State in 7th grade and again in 8th grade as a team was just super, super exciting. So I feel like as a coach, obviously, one of the biggest things is, yes, we have skills on the court, but I really like to preach that we've grown in so many other areas too in terms of sportsmanship and teamwork and the communication required to be on a volleyball team and learn to be a student first and an athlete second. So they had a fantastic season. I know they were super, super thankful to be recognized here and I'm sure they'll all appreciate the recognition and I'm proud of them. I think they'll all continue to do great things. They kind of split up in high school. So, yeah, thank you for having us. Yeah.
And it's also nearly 70 degrees outside, so I hope all celebrating an ice cream and not here at the board room. So thank you so much for your coaching. Next, I'd like to recognize the students who qualified for the wrestling tournament.
Do we have coaches here from wrestling?
Thank you. First off, it's been a great season. I, if I had to report in, we wrestled more than 400 matches. We won 65% of those. 171 of those matches at South ended with us pinning our opponents. It was an incredible season. But the finale of that season was watching Jack and Carlo go and face the State Tournament in DeKalb, which is an amazing arena when you walk into it. It's just, it's stunning. But I do want to thank the board for supporting that, for allowing me the opportunity to share what is my personally favorite sport with District 25. I'm so grateful for that opportunity. I also want to thank the administrators that helped make that possible, Dr. Vine, Dr. K, Dr. Morrison, Dr. Perkins, and Sherry Rosen that helped make that work, as well as, I'm super grateful for the addition of our activities directors, you know, Phil O'Grady, Ken Conway, I know Mike D'Amico and.
Anthony Kush.
Kush, Anthony Kush over at Thomas. That addition helped make that all so much smoother. So thank you for, you know, allowing us to add that position. I did not do this alone. I had many coaches on my staff. Dan Birdie couldn't be here with me. I also had some parent volunteers and community volunteers, Jeff Toll, Pete Aiello, and Lieutenant Harry McDonough, that helped me coach these, these fine wrestlers. And then finally, mostly, I'm thankful for them, for the wrestlers. Their hard work is what really, and they worked independently, they worked to achieve this goal. They, they set it out as their goal and I just was there to sign paperwork for them. So I'm, you know, I'm super grateful for what they put into it. And for, for my two wrestlers, I want to acknowledge the work of their practice partners. In particular, Jose and Joseph, the four of them not only represent these two getting to State, but the four of them qualified for sectionals three years in a row, which is an incredible achievement that I probably will not see again in this coaching career, as well as the rest of the team that just set the culture of high standards, hard work, and really excellence.
Actually, Jay said a lot of things that I was going to say anyways, but I want to try to remember to thank some people. Lori, I know that you were pretty instrumental in getting the whole wrestling program started, so I appreciate that and the support of the board. Other Lories in here, thank you for everything you've done for us too. And I don't have a lot of wrestling parents here, but they know how hard of a season it is. The kids know it's, it's a brutal season. I just wanted to take, I guess, a few minutes just to say how difficult it was for these guys to get to where they were. I mean, we have a five-month-long season, a lot of sports. I'm a volleyball coach too, and my kids have fun playing volleyball, but wrestling is honestly miserable most of the time they're doing. It's just, it's so rough. And so for them to put that much effort into the five months that they were there. Thomas had a great year. We won every tournament we were in except for sectionals and State. We only lost one meet this year. We brought, after winning regionals, we brought 16 kids to sectionals, and Brendan was the only one from our school that made it out, to give you an idea how difficult it is. So it's just, it's super rough. And I, I want to say one quick story too. There was a little miscommunication. I emailed his mom, I got an email from her today saying that she, they weren't going to make it tonight, so I didn't have anything prepared and didn't expect anything. And so I sent some stuff her in the email. This just, I wanted in front of all these people who I have a lot of respect for, say how great Brendan is. This is not about wrestling, but when he qualified for State, he had tears in his eyes and it wasn't about getting to State, and as hard as that was, he was upset because his teammates didn't make it. So I thought that was kind of a cool story to share, and I think he really kind of embodies what we would hope for out of a wrestler. So I really appreciate not only your, your hard work, but just being a good person. Thank you. That's all I got.
And for our wrestlers and our coaches, please accept this small token of appreciation, but know that this logo of District 25 means a lot to us. And we share it with you because you represent us well. Congratulations to all of you. We really appreciate it. And we want to make sure before you go that our coaches get water bottles too. So, Mr. Harris, maybe, Dr. Harris, if you could help us with that. Thank you so much to our coaches, our students, and our families of wrestling, of volleyball, of our All-Stars. We really appreciate you. Thank you for representing District 25 so well. We're very proud of you and congratulations to all of you. You, of course, are welcome to stay, but also encouraged to go home and get some rest or do some celebration. Thank you so much.
That was really sweet. How do we top that now? Okay, we will now move on to the organization part of the meeting. At the March 12 Board Meeting, the board determined that it will reorganize during this regular meeting, so we'll begin that process right now. So first of all, we're going to do the appointment of President Pro Tem, which is an action item. We'll need to appoint a President Pro Tem to start this process. Are there any nominations?
Madam President?
Yes, Kevin.
I nominate you, Anisha Jogi, to be President Pro Tem of the meeting.
Thank you so much. I will do that. Yeah, there, if there are no additional nominations, nominations are closed, and I will serve as a President Pro Tem. We will, to appoint a Secretary Pro Tem, are there any nominations? I'll make that nomination. I nominate Brian Surniglia to serve as Secretary Pro Tem.
Second.
Thank you, Brian and Kevin. Brian Surniglia will serve as Board of Education Secretary Pro Tem. We will now elect the offices of the board, including President, Vice President, and Secretary. Additionally, we will appoint a Recording Secretary, which we love to do every year. Following the guidelines of the Illinois Association of School Boards, if only one member is nominated for President, the President Pro Tem may cast a unanimous ballot and declare that candidate elected. If two or more members are nominated for the Office of President, a roll call voice vote is necessary. The member receiving a majority of the votes cast is elected. Once elected, the Board President presides over the meeting as the board proceeds to elect its Vice President and Secretary, using the same nomination and voting process that the board used to elect the President. So we will move on to the first part, which is appointing Board President. This is an action item. Are there any nominations for the Office of President? I'd like to, I'm humbled and honored to pick a nomination for Greg Scapalato to serve as our next. There are no additional nominations, nominations are closed. Oh, are there any more nominations? Okay, thank you. No other nomination. Nominations are closed and a unanimous ballot is cast and Board President. Congratulations, Greg. There you go.
Thank you, Dr. Jogi, and thank you, everyone. We'll continue with the organization, so we will now need to appoint a Vice President. So are there any nominations for the Office of Vice President?
I move to appoint Dr. Anisha Jogi as Vice President for a one-year term commencing today, April 9, 2024.
Thank you, Liz. Any other nominations? Seeing none, so there are no additional nominations, so nominations are closed and a unanimous ballot is cast, and Dr. Anisha Jogi will serve as Vice President of the Board of Education for a one-year term commencing today. Next, the board will appoint a Secretary. Are there nominations for the Office of Secretary?
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
I move to appoint Kevin Michael as, where is my spot here? As Secretary for a one-year term commencing today, April 9, 2024.
Thank you, Brian. Other, any other nominations? All right, seeing none, the nominations are closed and a unanimous ballot is cast, and Kevin Michael will serve as Secretary of the Board of Education for a one-year term commencing today. Finally, the board will appoint a Recording Secretary. This is the role that Ms. Lana O'Brien has typically fulfilled for the board. So are there any nominations for the Office of Recording Secretary?
I nominate Lana O'Brien for the position of Recording Secretary forever.
All right, well, any other nominations? And seeing none, the nominations are closed and unanimous ballot is cast, and Ms. Lana O'Brien will serve as Recording Secretary for the Board of Education for at least a one-year term commencing today. All right, the next step in our, the final step in our board organization is set our meeting dates and times for the next year's board meetings. This is an action item, so can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the board patient approve the school board meeting dates, times, and locations for 2024, 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second? Thank you, Rich. And Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Surniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olanichak?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lana. So that completes the board organization portion of tonight's agenda, so we will now resume the regular agenda items for regular business meeting. And that would move us to board communications. So to begin, are there any board member updates?
Mr. President?
Yes.
That sounds really good. As I pass on the leadership baton from President to our board to you, Greg, I want to thank you for stepping up to fulfill this important role. I know that you will exercise thoughtful leadership and steer our board effectively. Congratulations to our new Board Secretary as well, Kevin Michael. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with you. I truly want to take this moment to thank my board colleagues for your support and trust as I fulfill the role of President for the last two years. It's been a lot of fun. I'm really proud of our collective work as a team and we supported, as we supported every child in our district. Together, we truly upheld the effective governance principles. You know, first of all, we took, you know, we have this in our binder right in front of us all the time, so that we don't forget. And, you know, first of all, we took our responsibility for ourselves as a board pretty seriously. Together, our board, for the first time in our district, I believe 175-year history, was awarded the Illinois Association of School Board Effective Governance Award last year, which was a really big deal for us. So really kudos to us. We also clarified our district's purpose. So we amplified our district's vision and mission by living our new strategic plan, measuring and demonstrating our district's success. Over the past two years, we've been invited four times to present at state and national conferences, and we just got good news today that once again, the state conference, Illinois Association of School Boards, would like us to present on our Equity Focus Strategic Plan again. So we'll be going out to present in downtown Chicago. As far as working as a team of eight, we've done an extremely great job, and I'm so proud of our team. We worked as a team of eight and delegated authority to our superintendent, Dr. Vine. We revised our superintendent evaluation and made it a huge comprehensive process, which you all, each of you, put so much time into. And I am so grateful for the time that went into that process. In doing this, we entrusted our superintendent to steward our district with her strong leadership. We also hired, right on cue, our next superintendent, having undergone a very thorough recruiting process. Our district is so fortunate to continue our strong leadership legacy with Dr. Brian K. And lastly, we connected with our community through the hiring process by ensuring that we got widespread community involvement in the hiring process. We also, this community involvement piece, which is an effective principle for board governance, also calls for us to connect with our community authentically, and we continue to have our board coffees, and this time, having them at community spaces like Jerry's Cafe, which was really huge, just being out there instead of the community coming to us. So we're trying to continue to find spaces where we connect with our community. So serving together continues to be truly one of my life's biggest honors. So thank you so much to each of you for your dedication and partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Jogi. Any other updates from my colleagues here? None. I want to step in and, Dr. Jogi, you, you did a great job listing so many things that happened that, over the last two years, but I just want to express on behalf of the board the gratitude for your tireless dedication over the last two years. And again, a wonderful list of the fruits of our efforts, but your leadership. And I just want to highlight again the School Board Governance Award, which was presented to District 25, which is really a great example of, again, everybody's efforts to work as a highly functioning team. So we've all benefited from your leadership. So thank you.
You're so welcome.
I also want to say thank you to Brian Surniglia. So, Mr. Surniglia, I want to recognize your service across a range of officer roles. And as far as I could find in our records dating back to 2016, so you've served as Secretary most recently, but of course, as Vice President and President, and with several of those years through the challenging pandemic. So I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your selfless service as an officer role for so many years.
Glad to hand in yet another baton. Looking forward to your leadership.
And then I would like to move into a personal update. I had the opportunity to attend two of the many multicultural nights that are happening around the district or had happened. One was Windsor on March 7th and Patton on March 20th. And they each had their own style and structure, but what was clear. and structure, but what was clear is they each reflected their, their school communities. There was food, lots of food, music, there were performances, history, geography, and just so much, but it was so special to see, each in their own way, the pride and excitement that so many of the students, in their faces, as they shared their story with their friends, and then ran over to learn from another poster board and food display. So I just want to say thanks to all the staff, parent volunteers, and of course, administrators, because it was a lot of extra work, but it made a lot of difference, so thank you. All right, so we are going to continue on from board member updates, and let's go to EdRed with Kevin Michael and Stacy Mallon.
Thank you. So on Friday, April 5th, there was a Zoom EdRed meeting. It was a legislative meeting. Bridget Peach of EdRed organization shared a lot of legislative updates. I'm going to try to highlight a few that I think are most relevant to us as an elementary school district. SB 3606, which is the special ed funding bill, it will be heading to committee, or actually, it did head to committee in March, and it was voted through the committee 13 to 1, so it's be, it will be heading to the floor of the Senate for a vote. HB 4709, which I think I brought up at the last meeting, is the legislation to give districts the opportunity to opt out of being polling places for elections. Based on the information that was shared, there is currently no path forward for that. Bill is written based on heavy opposition from county clerks, and also it being a presidential election year, so they're very concerned about disrupting access to polling places, but they are doing additional research to find out how many people do actually vote in person at those polling places, both during presidential election years versus other election years, or, you know, primaries and things like that, to try to find out if they can find a way to move this legis, legislation forward in some way in the future. HB 2822 and HB 3991 are two similar bills supporting newcomer students, which I've brought up at past meetings. Their current proposal does include CPS schools, but they've come to an agreement that no more than 30% of any allocated funds can go directly to CPS within the, within the states, and they're asking for a total amount of $188 million, but they're not expecting that amount, but they are hoping that they will find some kind of happy medium there. Let's see, I'm going to kind of move past some of this, because I don't think it directly impacts District 25. One that has come up in the past, House Bill 3907 relates to teacher plan time. Last report, they didn't think it was going to move forward, but now it sounds like it is. The sponsor of that bill is very determined to make sure that something moves with that bill, even though it's not currently supported by EdRed. They are expecting support from IEA and IFT, so they're hoping to negotiate and find an amended version of the bill that might support teachers, but also be easier for districts to handle as far as scheduling concerns. Senate Bill 3166 and House Bill 5275 will require information from IEPs or 504s to be included in students' permanent records. The main goal of that proposal is to help adults who are seeking disability. Evidence that any disabilities manifest before the age of 18. So that is the purpose behind that bill, but it has not moved to vote yet. There are also, EdRed is tracking many other bills that are currently, they're not, Bridget's words, where she's not considering them dead bills necessarily, but they did not need lines required for the current session, and those include auto enrollment for accelerated placement, the school bus seat belt bill that I think I brought up at the previous meeting, and the bill about student participation reports. So those are the updates that I have to share. I'll hand it over to Stacy if she has anything to share.
I laid, made notes on the exact same bills that you did that would affect us. The only other thing, I did, I did ask for any clarification. There is some legislation that our ordinance passed in Cook County requiring paid leave to be earned by every employee for one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours they worked. We are not supportive of this legislation, because it doesn't, state law excludes municipalities and school districts. This legislation does not. It would mean school districts in Cook County have to treat any of our staff, really being part-time staff that don't get paid leave, differently than any other school districts in any other counties. And we did, Lori and I sent a letter detailing the impact it would have in terms of the kind of things that I don't think they realize happen in schools. So we'll see, EdRed and Scope and others are still working on a fix for this, but we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you, Kevin and Stacy, for tracking and updating us on those items. So we'll move to ISB, Dr. Jogi.
Yeah, like I said, it's really exciting. I saw the email come in from Illinois Association of School Boards inviting our board to once again present on our Equity Focus Strategic Plan, so I want to open it up to all our board members. Anybody who would like to participate at the panel in November would be great, and we'll be, I don't know, our stage keeps getting bigger, right, Dr. K and Greg, so we keep getting more and more people come, so please join us, and we'll have another presentation so we can learn and share with school board member community across the state of Illinois. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to be excused, as I, a little personal note, it's the end of the fasting month, and tomorrow is the eat celebration, so I have lots of cookies and people in my home, so I'll head out right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Jogi. Okay, and we'll move to hear about NSSEO with Liz.
Thank you. The NSSEO community is busy preparing for their upcoming graduations and proms and end of the year celebrations, lots of fun things going on there. They're working on their budget. I know that Stacy Mallon's been working closely with them, and we'll be back in touch with more information on that. Also, they had a very successful bingo night. I was not a big winner. I was, I was hopeful, but it was a lot of fun, and great families and just a really great community. So I will, again, next year, we'll remind you all, if you'd like to come, I will get there early and save us a table. I learned too, you have to get there early. Now I know the system. Join me next year, it was a lot of fun. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. All right, we'll move to community input, and this is the time in our agenda we set aside for community input. If a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you please complete one of the blue forms provided on the table in the lobby and hand the card to Mrs. O'Brien. You don't have any to receive. Okay, all right, well, thank you for that. And we will then move right to communications from our district partners. So, Dr. Vine, do we have an update from PTA?
No report, but next month, they look forward to coming and sharing the outcome of their Pack the Piggies fundraisers that all of our schools have been doing, as well as reporting on the PTA scholarship winners.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll go to ABC 25 Foundation, Gina.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, exciting news, we have raised enough funds through all the generous donations, and we are very grateful for all of our generous donors to purchase an additional fork farm hydroponic unit for the district. And I have to say that slow, otherwise it sounds really funny. And we also have exceeded our goal, and we are now on our way to potentially trying to purchase yet another unit, but that is still in its infancy, so we thank all of our generous donors and anybody who did not have a chance to offer up donations and is interested in it, after all of the great advertisements that my friend Allison and I gave at the last board meeting. It would be wonderful to see those donations keep coming in so that we could purchase up what would be a fourth unit for our district. So that's our first, that's our really big news. Yes, very exciting. And then just a reminder for event planning, so Liz has bingo with NSSEO. We have our fun fair, which is slated for June 1st, and we look forward to having everybody come out and participate and enjoy what will be our inaugural fun fair, and we look forward to many more to come.
Thank you, Gina. All right, we'd like to welcome up Allison Berg for an update from the ATA.
Never miss an opportunity. Is this on? It is. Okay, so good evening. Tonight, I am spotlighting more than one school, since there are so many cool things going on around the district, it was hard for me to focus on only one, and mostly because I forgot to tell the school beforehand. Anyways, I'm going to start with Windsor. Windsor School, Mrs. Colando's instructional kindergarten and first grade classroom have been participating in weekly cooking lessons, with some help from fourth grade students from Mrs. Murphy's class. Students help one another identify and organize ingredients, they follow a visual recipe, and they try new food items. This activity has allowed students to work on building on their socialization skills, and they have loved having, having this opportunity. And you can see there, they are doing some cooking, and here are some students helping each other with that. So it's been a really popular program at Windsor, a nice opportunity for all the students involved. TAs were also celebrated this last week at Windsor School. We love our TAs, and we celebrated them to thank them for all they do at Windsor and across the district. We really couldn't do our jobs without our TAs. They're huge, huge helpers for all of us, and we're grateful for them. The ILP classroom at South is learning about fast food items this month, and there they are, Ronald McDonald. Westgate had an evening to celebrate the arts this week, so there are some pictures from Westgate, music and art displayed throughout their building, all the hard work of the students, again, an awesome opportunity for students and families to come in to see what's going on at Westgate. The Thomas and South Middle School Science Olympia varsity teams and some JV members who are competing in trial events are headed to the state competition at the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana on Saturday, April 20th. They will be competing against 44 other teams from all over Illinois. And here's some pictures from Thomas, your Science Olympia team, and here is from South. Actually, I had this picture in my classroom today, and my students were like, that's my sister and that's my neighbor, so it's actually super fun. I had it like up on my board while I was putting this together, and they were like, oh, we know all these people, so it's nice to see it in the elementaries as well. And then finally, I can't miss, the solar eclipse was a huge event this week. It was so fun, actually, it was so fun to see the pictures all over Twitter and all over everywhere, the students enjoying that opportunity. So here are some pictures from that. This is some of our middle school students with their glasses on. These are some students at the elementary level with their glasses on and their glasses mask thing that they made, and here's even some administrators enjoying it as well. Couldn't miss on that opportunity. And then this weekend, which we already talked about, our All-Stars are competing at Prospect High School on Sunday, so if you're interested in seeing the Special Olympics, please come out to join and cheer them on. And finally, District 25 is going to be hosting a blood drive on May 6th, so if you would like to mark your calendars for that, more information hopefully will be coming out at the end of the week for that, and I'll send a flyer to our board members about that as well. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share. I should actually, we, we had some elections for the ATA as well since our last meeting, so I'm happy to announce that I will remain your president for the next two years, and Amy McKellen will remain the secretary for the next two years, and our exec board will stay as is for the next year, before our next elections next spring. So, yeah.
Congratulations, Allison, and I know the board really appreciates these windows into the daily life, so thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which is an action item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report. B, treasurer's report. C, invoices. D, fixed asset disposal report. E, regular enclosed session meeting minutes of March 12th, 2024.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Scapolato?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olonechak?
Neumann? Yes.
Thank you, Lana, and at this time, I believe Dr. K has an administrator to introduce.
On behalf of the board approving the consent agenda, I would like to highlight a position of Ally Yoder moving from Westgate School, doing a dual role of assistant principal and Department of Student Services coordinator at the elementary level. She wants to build her resume and get back into the middle school, but this time as an administrator, so Ally Yoder, come on up. We are excited to welcome you to the middle school level. In the same titles, the assistant principal changes just slightly to associate principal. All that means is more time and more excitement. So on behalf of the board, we would like to present you with a small gift, and we also have, I see some guests that you brought as well. I wanted to give them what we traditionally call a stress ball, so when they're waiting for mom, you have something to squeeze and wait for her. So I'm going to toss this to you. Oh, you already have one, great. Would you like one as well?
Yeah.
And I think your husband may also need a stress ball. Yes, and last but not least, I think you may also need a stress ball. I'll give you the opportunity just to welcome your husband and your two children and say a couple words if you'd like.
I'm thrilled to accept the new position. It is, you know, interesting, some people want to go to middle school, and that's where my roots are, and so it's combining two of my favorite things. So it's combining special education and working with middle school, and I am very excited and thrilled to join the Wolf Pack, and it will be a hard goodbye, a hard see you soon for Westgate, but I am thrilled and grateful for this opportunity to remain in District 25, so thank you. And I love you, Yoders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. K, and congratulations, Ms. Yoder.
And Yoder family, go take your stress balls home, and thank you for coming. Have a great night.
Okay, we'll move to student learning portion of the agenda, and we have an information item, and it'll be led by Dr. Fitzpatrick on the elementary literacy curriculum adoption. So welcome, Dr. Fitzpatrick, and to your team, so when you're ready, if you could
A little prepared, I have no sort of things in my pockets to hand out to people, but I'll do my best here. All right, so as President Scapolato stated, we are here to share and very excited to share an elementary literacy program review update with you. Before we get started, oh, clicker, got it, thanks. Here with me tonight is Mrs. Sharon Nellis, our Literacy and SCL Coordinator, Dr. Corinne Duffy, a fourth grade teacher at Westgate, and Mrs. Amy McFarland, first grade teacher at Ivy Hill. And in the audience is Andrea Luso, our MTSS Coordinator, who also supported this effort. So this elementary literacy program review process connects directly to and supports the district's strategic plan to empower an inclusive, diverse community of learners to thrive as global citizens. Specifically, the program review process aligns with the student achievement goal. Our literacy instruction at the elementary school level, we use high-impact teaching strategies to ensure all learners are academically ready for high school. Our elementary students are provided opportunities to learn and thrive with literacy experiences that ensure high student engagement and ownership of their learning, and student experiences are differentiated to meet the needs of all students and close performance gaps. Tonight's agenda will include Tonight's agenda will include an overview of the Elementary Literacy Program Review Process and timeline, followed by more details of each phase, including research, action plan, professional learning, implementation years 1 and 2, and monitor and refine. We will also recommend a new K-5 literacy resource, share the fiscal impact, and finish with Corinne and Amy sharing their instructional, the instructional implications for our students. So, three, last school year, oh, yep, hang on a minute. I jumped ahead. Three years ago, we formalized a District 25 Program Review Process. Some of you have seen this before, but we figured this was a good opportunity to kind of review what that looks like specifically in terms of literacy. The process aims to ensure that we engage in continuous improvement focused on student achievement and research-based approaches to teaching and learning. It also provides a level of predictability for budgeting and our staff. Our process is unique because of its heavy emphasis on professional learning and improving practice. We devote an entire year to building teacher efficacy and developing In the past, a committee would recommend adopting a new resource in the spring. If approved by the Board, teachers would then engage in only a couple of training sessions before fully implementing the new resource in the fall. However, we know that more robust professional learning is needed for our teachers before adopting a new resource. In our new process, we first identify how we want to improve our practice, determine if our current resource supports this practice, and then engage in a full year of learning together to build teacher capacity and develop implementation support, including a scope and sequence. In addition to adding this critical year to our review process, we hope to continue to look for ways to provide additional time for teachers to engage in professional learning and articulation throughout the school year. We are pretty proud of this comprehensive and holistic new Program Review Process. Several local districts have already reached out to hear more about our process and possibly replicate it in their own district. So, last school year, our Elementary Literacy Program Review Journey began. The Department of Student Learning reviewed best practices, standards, and curricula. This year, during act planning, our literacy committee met and learned together. We also used tools from our previous curriculum equity audit that we completed a few years ago, including a cultural sponsor, English Language Arts, and enlisted the support of our Director of Equity and Multilingual Programs, Shab Polos. It's popping? We're popping? Okay. All right. I want to give her credit, so let me back up a minute here. We enlisted the support of our Director of Equity and Multilingual Programs, Shab Polos. The scorecard that we used helps ensure a resource integrates students' cultural backgrounds, languages, and life experiences with their academic learning. Next year, should the Board approve the literacy committee's recommendation for a new resource, professional learning will take place for all K-5 teachers. An early implementation of the new resource will begin in the classrooms of our committee members and kindergarten teachers. During implementation years 1 and 2, continued professional learning and full implementation will occur for all K-5 teachers and students. While we continuously evaluate our programs, we will dive deeper into our achievement data during the final monitor and refine phase in, believe it or not, 2027, 2028. Now, I will turn it over to Sharon to further explain the phases of the Literacy Program Review Process.
Click. Yeah. Yeah, you can click for me. I can click. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to go off-script just for one moment. I have two outstanding teachers who are going to speak tonight, but I do feel like in spirit, even though the room's a little empty, we also have 32 committee members really cheering for tonight. And we're going to recognize the hard work and part of our presentation, but it has been a tremendous professional journey just to watch the dedication and commitment of our teachers and administrators on our committee. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, good evening, and I'm going to go over some of the nuts and bolts. So, during our research year, DSL delves deeply into the latest discoveries and advancements in the field of education. This involves actively participating in webinars, attending conferences, and conducting extensive readings. DSL explores various curriculum companies and resources available on the market as part of this process. We review these resources comprehensively and extend invitations to numerous companies for meetings to further understand their offerings. This exhaustive exploration enables DSL to identify companies that align with a goal set forth by our committee, which are established in the following year. In the spring of the research year, DSL opens applications for teachers to join the committee. The selection process for committee members involves carefully reviewing applications to ensure a balance of staff representation, including considerations such as expertise, experience, and diversity. This year, our K-5 Literacy Committee began meeting and consisted of 32 total staff members, including all of our elementary principals. The inclusion of all elementary principals on a committee was a first for District 25. Our committee included our K-5 classroom teachers, multilingual teachers, special education staff, student learning coach, literacy interventionist, the DEI director, DSL curriculum coordinators, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Learning, elementary principals, and Laura Belchinko. Laura Belchinko is our, was a literacy consultant who is a contributor to the newly adopted Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan. The professional learning experience undergone by our committee was comprehensive. Each member studied the book Teaching Reading, which is comprised of 13 modules covering various aspects of how children learn to read and effective strategies for teacher support. Laura Belchinko, an experienced literacy consultant, provided detailed instruction on the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan, reviewing state learning standards with our committee, and offered valuable insights into the science of reading. With her background as a former Assistant Superintendent and past president of Illinois Suburban Council of the International Reading Association, her guidance ensured a robust understanding of literacy instruction aligned with educational standards and best practices. Kindergarten teachers voted to implement the new resource for the 2024-25 school year alongside our literacy committee. This adjustment is essential to avoid new kindergarten hires needing to adapt to our current resources for a one-year period and ensures efficient resource utilization. The decision was based on feedback from our current existing kindergarten staff who prefer to start next year with our new resource. Finally, resource training will occur this May for all committee members and kindergarten teachers. We started the school year with the Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan in a draft format. The plan was finalized in January and aligns with our committee work and the chosen new resource. Goal 1 ensures that every student receives high-quality, evidence-based literacy instruction, and this will be achieved by implementing the new resource to enrich learning experiences. Under Goal 2, the plan emphasizes educators' continuous support and preparation to deliver such instruction, and our district provides a robust Program Review Process, including a year of professional learning. Instructional coaches will also be a part of this professional learning process. Goal 3 centers on equipping leaders with the tools to establish and maintain equitable conditions for literacy instruction. All principals participated on the committee and received tailored professional learning. I want to just say one more off-script comment. I'm going to talk about our core District 25 literacy belief statements. This was another highlight for us. We had a few tears after we finalized this process. So, again, yes, happy tears. Yes. A point of pride for all of us. The committee created core literacy belief statements this year. Creating core belief statements helped to unify the committee, focus its efforts, and promote effective collaboration in supporting students' literacy development. The main tenets include inclusive literacy education, systematic and explicit instruction, and connected instruction for deeper understanding. The committee affirms every student's right to learn to read through high-quality and culturally relevant instruction. Our approach includes systematic and explicit instruction, covering phonemic awareness, alphetics, phonics, sight words, vocabulary fluency, comprehension, and writing. Interconnected reading and writing and language instruction are essential to foster deeper understanding and transferable skills across disciplines. We prioritize creating positive learning environments that foster student ownership, choice, reflection, and a passion for reading and writing. Our approach to literacy instruction is rigorous, integrating data analysis, ongoing assessment, and differentiation to meet diverse needs and prepare students for success in an ever-changing world. We empower teachers through relevant, ongoing professional learning experiences and collaboration opportunities. Therefore, our committee recommends HMH Into Reading, a top-rated instructional program rooted in the science of reading and emphasizing foundational literacy skills. It integrates social-emotional learning, provides diverse and culturally sustaining materials, and offers differentiated support for all learners. Aligned with standards, the program includes comprehensive lessons and assessment tools to gauge students' progress effectively. Supported by a robust technology platform, it also offers professional learning resources to empower educators. During our professional learning phase, we prioritize our comprehensive professional learning initiatives to enhance instructional effectiveness across our classroom. This includes providing all teachers with rigorous instruction on best practices and resource utilization. Most of the sessions will occur during our SIP and Institute Days. Specialized training sessions will be tailored specifically for administrators to equip them with the knowledge and tools to support successful implementation in their buildings. Additionally, we will implement accelerated learning opportunities for the literacy committee and kindergarten teachers. These plans ensure that our staff will be well-prepared and proficient in utilizing new resources and strategies to foster student success. Beginning in the 2025-26 academic year, we will fully implement the resource across all K-5 classrooms and provide ongoing professional learning opportunities during this phase. Also, support will be provided by instructional coaches and advanced learning specialists to assist our teachers in effectively implementing the program and address any challenges that may arise. During the Monitor and Refine Phase, we will monitor our IAR English Language Arts outcomes, map reading results alongside classroom assessments. Student engagement will be closely monitored, ensuring active participation and motivation. Where needed, we will refine instructional practices and provide ongoing support to teachers to ensure effective implementation, fostering an environment for student success and growth.
All right. In terms of the fiscal impact, we are recommending a six-year contract plus the literacy committee and early implementation. The cost for the six years plus kindergarten literacy This excludes shipping. The district, by going with a multi-year contract, will save over $470,000. And this does not even account for future price increases could be incurred with yearly contracts. And we feel pretty confident, given that we have our formalized Program Review Process, that's the part about being able to more predictably budget for what we need. So, as we've said, tonight, we have two classroom teachers who are on the literacy committee here to talk about their experience piloting HMH Into Reading. And I'll now... You giving me some inform...
Yes.
Oh. Yeah, HMH. We wanted to make sure we defined it. Hood Mifflin Hardcore Publishing. Couple companies have merged over the years. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Amy.
Thank you. Hi. I'm Amy McFarland, 1st grade teacher at Ivy Hill. I really appreciated having the opportunity to be a part of the K-5 Literacy Committee. All of the committee members read Teaching Reading over the summer and posted our reflections and thoughts. The current research for literacy was eye-opening. We spent the first meeting discussing the importance of the new research and how language comprehension and word-recognition skills intertwine to create best practices for Teaching Reading. The committee spent a great amount of time combing through the research and developing our belief statements. We use these to create our list of essential components that we would like to see in the new program. We spent some time working with teachers across grade levels and different schools, as well as those in administrative roles. We were trained on two different literacy programs and given time to teach them. HMH is a comprehensive literacy program that aligns with the science of reading. It uses a systematic and connected phonics, scope, and sequence. It is engaging for the students and is perfectly challenging while also being attainable. There is a lot of movement incorporated in the foundational skills section of the program for the primary grades. My class thoroughly enjoyed stomping, raising the roof, clapping, and saying words in slow motion to develop their phonemic awareness and phonics skills. There are daily games to learn the words to know so that they can be successful readers with the decodable books and the My Book texts. The fiction and nonfiction books in the student My Books are wonderful sources of literature that can be used to guide comprehension discussions. The students enjoyed being able to annotate in their books. The books also provide different types of writing to engage with the text. Students wrote a letter to the characters of one text to tell them how to find a jewel. They also wrote the steps of how to do a craft they had just read about. They used adjectives to describe a desert after reading about them. The writing about reading is quick and engaging in so many different ways. My students were so excited to be able to take their My Books home. I'm looking forward to continuing my work with the literacy committee next year as we experience a full year of the HMH Literacy Program with our students. The teachers in D-25 are hopeful for a new literacy program that applies the practices and has the instructional framework found in the science of reading. I will work with my colleagues to do what we can to make the transition for all of the teachers in D-25 smooth and something they can feel excited to teach.
Thank you. Next, Corinne is going to share her experiences with HMH Into Reading.
Hello. I am thankful to be part of the Literacy Committee, a team charged with taking on such a pivotal task that impacts both our staff and our students. In the first few meetings, we learned a lot about the changes happening in pedagogy and science. At first, it was uncomfortable, because as most of us know, change can be difficult. But as we began to unpack the new Illinois Comprehensive Literacy Plan, I was overcome by a sense of hope. The past few years, I'm sorry. As our group refocused on a set of principles that ensures all of our students achieve and have opportunities for meaningful learning, you could feel the shift in the room. The past few years have brought a lot of change, sometimes faster than we could acclimate, and a lot of uncertainty. But as we reinvested in standards and developed our core beliefs as a team, it finally felt like a sigh of relief that we had made it to the other side. that we had made it to the other side. As part of the selection process, we all had the opportunity to test out the new program options. I think it's most fitting at this point to have all of you experience the proposed HMH curriculum from the perspective of one of my students. So if you could close your books. I know it's really hard not to look at them. You know, they're all like, there's a graphic novel at the back. You have in front of you an entrance ticket. It's a small piece of paper, so you're going to need a pencil or a pen. Don't peek yet. We use these in the classroom to kind of set a stage for what we're about to learn and kind of gauge the background knowledge, activate it for our kids, and kind of get an understanding of where they're starting from. I'm going to give you guys... I put 30 seconds, but I'll give you a minute because you might be shocked. I'm going to give you a minute to list as many of the seven natural wonders of the world as you can name. Are you ready? Let me get time this for me. You can flip it. Are you ready? Seven... Oh, listen, I can't give you that information. Seven natural wonders. Okay. See what you think you know. Are you ready? You're doing amazing. And five seconds. Okay, pens down. If you could turn to page 14 and see how many of the seven you got. Page 14. In your My Book, this would be the book we refer to. Go ahead and skim and put on your fingers for me, just like a quick number. How many did you actually get of the seven? You guys did great. You did better than I did. I want you to skim the page, too. Look at the pictures in the map and just talk at your table about one place that you... One thing you're thinking of. Maybe it's a place you want to visit. Maybe it's a place you've already visited that you might be excited about. Yep, same page. Just look at one of those... At the seven, is there any that you would want to see? I love hearing you guys talking, your excitement. If you could give me a thumbs up when you and your partner are done. Thumbs up when you and your partner are done. Yeah. It's really exciting, right? It looks like we already have some explorers in the room. So this was the very first lesson from the HMH pilot that my kids got to engage in, and they were immediately hooked. As we continued to read through the book, we learned about other wondrous places. And my kids even began to create bucket lists to help guide their future travels. I saw their vocabularies become more robust as they transferred new words to their conversations throughout the day. I witnessed them become more globally-minded and more curious about the world beyond Arlington Heights. And wrapping up the unit, I asked my kids what they liked most about HMH. Their responses included that it made my brain bigger and that there was just so much culture. Many of my students even asked to keep their book so they could read the other articles and stories in it in their book bin. I am so excited to see how this curriculum implements next year as we do it more comprehensively as a team in our classrooms and see the impact that it has on our teaching and learning.
Sharon's already worried that you're going to take the books. She's going to collect them. We'll have to add more money to the budget if we lose those. All right. Amy and Corinne, thank you so much for sharing your experiences. I just want to close by thanking all of the members of the literacy committee for their time and continued hard work on behalf of their colleagues and our students. It's not easy always to be a teacher leader among your peers. And individuals that sign up to these committees really take that responsibility on. They share information with their colleagues about the process. We call it spilling the tea. At the end of each meeting, we share information that they can go on to share with their colleagues. And next year, they're really going to embark on not only using a resource, but then also developing these implementation tools, which will really, I think, end up being considered a gift to their colleagues so that they can really hit the ground running. So as this was informational item, the recommendation to adopt HMH Into Reading will be an action item on May 14, so our next board meeting agenda. And at this point, you're now happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzpatrick, and Mrs. Nellis, and Mrs. McFarland, and Dr. Duffy for that presentation. I mean, you distilled down what is already years of work, right? You know, into this for us to understand. And not the four... Just the four of you, but the team and the entire committee for all the time and dedication. And I just love the presentation that you took us through because it really exemplifies that I hear, I see, I do. And now, I really understand what you guys are talking about. So, but let's open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian.
So a couple of questions. We answered one of them. I was going to ask what HMH was. I figured it was an acronym. So Houghton Mifflin, not to be confused with Dufflin Midland from the Office, right? The costs from a budget perspective, Stacy, is that paid upfront? Or... But I mean, this is a six-year program, so does that come into play? Or just kind of curious? High level, not a very detailed question.
No, it would be an upfront cost because the quotes to do it annually and pay the cost annually would have been approximately $477,000, probably more.
So that was my next question. The savings is in fact because we're doing it upfront.
So that's the savings instead of doing it every year over five years and paying it on an annual basis. Plus, that doesn't include any inflationary increases into the future, which could occur.
Right. I'll just go through. I've got a couple of them. Rather than go back and forth unless anybody's getting more budget questions. So 30 people in the committee.
Brian, I think Gina wants to jump in.
Budget, go.
How does that compare to what we currently have in the budget?
So we...
The $477 would be cost avoidance, not cost savings, correct?
Correct. So we don't have... We did a... Just like we did the math curriculum, a six-year math curriculum for, I think, just under $1 million. So now we have no budget for math curriculum for the five-year... You know, we pay it all upfront, then we have no cost for it. So we would pay this all next year. We'd pay a small portion of it for the pilot materials to get this year. We'd pay it all upfront next year, and then we'd have no literacy costs for the next six years. So all the consumable supplies, all the workbooks and stuff for the students, unless we had significant enrollment changes.
How does that compare to our current curriculum, then? I guess I'm looking for, is it actual savings? Is there actual savings compared to whatever our last contract was?
Well, our last contract for literacy materials would have been probably seven years ago.
At least.
At least. I would guess it was not...
Quite so low. Quite so high.
Quite so high due to inflationary increases and just cost of goods, especially since 2020. But this plan to... I mean, to invest in something and do it... Anyway, we look at it, we're going to pay for the curriculum. It's just so it's cost avoidance. I guess I still... I mean, similar to the furniture, I still see it as we save the money if we pay it upfront than what if we pay it over six years.
Okay.
Maybe just adding on... Sorry, Brian, getting back to you. But adding on to Gina's question, maybe asked a little differently. Let's say we don't do this. What's our annual cost for the program? Our literacy program?
If we don't...
Let's say we don't do this.
If we don't do this, then we don't change literacy programs.
Right. So what's the cost of that, then?
We paid that upfront seven years ago.
We paid it upfront for six years, so we'd have to renew and get the cost of the licenses for any of the electronic pieces of the materials plus the cost of the consumable supplies.
So not budgetary, but what current reading program will this replace?
Yeah, great question. Yeah. It's... Actually, this is... So this... It's been mentioned a couple of times. This is a comprehensive program that will replace a couple of different programs that we have for reading, for writing, for vocabulary, word study. So for those of you that are on board for a while, you may recall that in the previous adoption, it was brought to you in separate pieces. There were separate committees that looked at writing, separate committee that looked at reading. Schoolwide is probably a name that may be familiar with many of you. That's kind of our overarching reading program. But it would end up... This comprehensive program would end up replacing all those separate programs for all the different facets of reading.
Okay. So Rich's point, there would be renewal costs across, you know, all those disciplines. So Fontes and Penella still in?
Can you say that again?
Fontes and Penella still in?
Oh, that will be something that the committee will actually review next year prior to the full implementation the following year. So great question, but yeah, not decided yet.
Okay. And then I just was going to make a general comment about, you know, thanking you guys for the time and the effort. You know, 30-person committee is pretty tough to manage for any task, right? How often do you guys meet as a committee of 30?
Yeah, how many times total?
Every month?
Every month.
Last meeting was in '07, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so to your point, and Sharon deserves a lot of the credit, there were a lot of structured conversations to make decisions because that's a large number of people to come to consensus. But honestly, it was the development of those core belief statements at the onset of the committee work that really kind of helped ground everyone in what our purpose was and what we wanted for our kids. So it made it slightly easier to then continue to go back to those each time we tackled a tough decision.
Yeah, kind of foundational. Wrangling 30 overachievers every month.
Well, yeah, they're all bosses in their own classroom. So, you know, then they all come together.
Well, thanks for all the work.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes, Gina.
So I will echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you, guys, for all of your hard work, dedication, effort. I just have a point of clarity. I want to make sure I understand that this has no impact to middle-school literacy. This is just...
Correct. This is just kindergarten through fifth grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And Liz?
Mr. President? Also, thank you, guys, so much, especially to our committee, literacy committee. I know it is really hard as a teacher to bring on something new and try it in the middle of the year and get the kids on board. My daughter was actually in a pilot program in her classroom, and it was very exciting, and she loved it. And I've kind of been peeking over her shoulder, looking at her writing. As a writing teacher, I'm loving it. I'm very excited. One of the things I'm curious about is with our current programming now, do you anticipate there will be gaps in skills when we switch to a new program? I know there's a scaffolding of skills. When all of a sudden we bring in something new, is that part of your process to anticipate what might normally be taught in first grade? It might be lost, or is it pretty similar? Or is that part of the plan? What are you thinking about that?
Yeah, I think... And sorry, I know Sharon was going to jump in, too, so I don't want to steal her thunder. Yeah. Again, I think that's the beauty of this additional year we've built into our process. So next year, the committee, as they're kind of going through piloting additional pieces of it, they will provide guidance and a bit of a roadmap in terms of additional skills that we might need to build in to kind of scaffold up to what is expected. So there might be routines, let's say, that are built in first and second grade that a third-grade teacher would need to rely upon that the kids wouldn't have had previously. So it'll be our great committee members who will kind of help to uncover those things. And we'll produce some... That'll be like that implementation support that we'll provide. That might be some documentation. That might be some other supplemental materials. But that's the piece about sort of customizing this then for District 25.
Mr. President?
Yes?
First of all, I want to echo the appreciation and gratitude of the other board members, both for your presentation tonight and all the hard work of the entire committee over the course of the last year plus. Just a question for clarification on... I think it was on Slide 10 where it says... Where it mentions that the kindergarten committee members will be implementing the new program starting next year. I think you also mentioned other people would be implementing it next year. Could you repeat who that would be?
Yeah. It'll be all the kindergarten teachers plus our committee members. So they will just continue using the resource through next year, again, to help support developing those implementation documents.
I would like to commend the committee and the kindergarten teaching team on deciding to make that commitment because not only will that, as you pointed out, avoid new teachers from having to learn a brand-new curriculum two years in a row, but will also empower those kindergarten teachers to be additional experts in the full-year implementation the following school year for everybody in their buildings. And hopefully, it will also better prepare next year's kindergarteners for the first-grade adoption with their first-grade teachers the following year. So I think that was well thought out and a wise decision.
Thanks. Yeah, we're hoping our first-grade teachers are thankful because they'll get to reap some benefits that wouldn't otherwise have been in place, right? Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Rich.
Like, I do have a couple of questions here. Again, it sounds like the common echoing of, you know, good work by the committee. One of the things I want to highlight and really... I'm happy that you guys did this is recognizing that you can't just say, "Yes, we're going to do it," and then three months later implement it fully within the district. There has to be a ramp-up. You know, people have to learn it. They have to socialize it. They have to experience it, all those types of things. So I appreciate you guys doing that. I guess some of my questions delve into the actual program, I guess. Help me understand, what are the deficiencies of the current program? And how does this program address those deficiencies?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
So currently, we have several tools for the different areas of literacy. So for instance, in Amy's classroom, she utilizes a tool called Schoolwide Reading Fundamentals for the overarching reading comprehension aspects. She has a phonics program by Fontes and Pennell. And she has a writing program from another classroom collaborative, collaborative classrooms, that's called Being a Writer. And so Amy is juggling and maneuvering and making sure all of these things work together in harmony. I didn't mention that Corinne has some similar resources, but our word study is different in grades four and five. So one of the things that we have recognized over time is that our elementary teachers are pretty much at capacity. And so anything that we can do to make some of our teaching experiences more seamless is, I think, of utmost importance for us as a Department of Student Learning. When we went to our committee, that was one of the first conversations we had. Let's talk about our current resources and where are some of the deficits and struggles that you face. That was something that was recognized in our core literacy beliefs, as wanting to have a comprehensive tool that worked together. The scope and sequence is developed in harmony. And so we feel like the ease of teaching will be lifted with having a comprehensive program like HMH into reading. And I think both of our teachers here tonight noted that in their presentations, too, that they felt that during our pilot.
Can you, can I ask on top of that, can you also expand on the more recent research that led to the very recently adopted state plan?
Yeah, absolutely, so we've been living in the world of the pendulum swing. I've been in education for over thirty years and with a deep focus in literacy for the majority of that. And I've seen this pendulum swing several times, right now, we're in one and it's based on what's called the science of reading. It's not new, we have always had reading best practices and what's considered science. There is some research, though, that has emerged about specifically decoding and encoding. And so part of our research year, we spent a great deal of time really studying that. And so we brought that information to the committee. You heard Amy reference, and I referenced, a book called Teaching Reading. That was a very deep dive for our committee members. I would liken it to taking a graduate-level class in reading, would you agree? And they did that work over the summer months, and then it led into our committee work. So we really wanted our teachers to be equipped with what's happening in the area of literacy right now, what are, what are the general conversations, and what shifts do we need to make? I think it's exciting work that this science is emerging and that we're talking about this, and there is a deep focus on some of these core tenants of literacy development. And so that is something that also will be, and, and one of the reasons HMH was appealing to us and brought to our committee, because it does address some of those deficits that, I wouldn't say they weren't being addressed. We've always taught decoding, we've always taught systematic and explicit phonics, but this is a different focus and attention to it.
Thank you, Lori, for that, so really then there's two things, it's the decoding and encoding, maybe more structure focus on it, and then it's the consolidation of several tools, that's the, the major deficiency of our current program?
Yeah, I will add too, that over time, we want to make sure we are providing our teachers and our students with updated approaches and literature, too, that's enriching, multicultural, that has diversity. So we also felt a need to really take a strong lens and look at our resources, just as, almost like, do, are some of them frankly, just outdated and needing, needing to have an updated version? So that's, that's another reason why our curriculum cycles work pretty efficiently and effectively, is because there's not a lag in time. With math, you saw that we didn't adopt a new resource, we stayed with Math in Focus and used their updated version of that. So that, that could happen with any of our curriculum adoptions as well. But in this case, we, our committee felt strongly that we needed some updates to the resources, along with some of the other things we've mentioned.
So that leads right into my next kind of question, is that, you know, it's just, just doing rough, rough math, it's five years from the time the committee started the work back in twenty-two until it's fully implemented. And so to your point of constant evolution, things are moving during this five years. So how can you be sure that, you know, in, what you started back in twenty-two is now going to be effective in twenty-seven? Is that, that's going to be it versus some other new thing that's out there?
Yeah, so, yeah, great question. I think one thing I'll remind the board, the state literacy plan just came out this winter. So we were aware of it in draft form, we just got it. We're in a really good position to be able to respond to that plan, because we were already in a program review cycle. There are other districts that were not already kind of with literacy in the hopper to evaluate. Those districts are now, I think, quickly moving to do so. So we feel in that regard, we're in, we're in a pretty good position there. Then throughout the implementation years and the monitor and refine years, there may be additional tweaks that happen. We, in, you know, in the absence of some, you know, major research, we would look to just simply, it's not simple. Sorry, teachers, I in no way want to suggest that anything that you're doing is simple. We would look to be making some tweaks to the instruction we're doing, so really, it's about those instructional practices. It's gonna be ongoing, but that's the nature of education. I mean, our students are in front of us the entire time, we cannot shut things down to say, okay, we're gonna take a little break here and we're gonna do our research and we're gonna do a beta, you know, something or other, and then kids come on back in and we'll, we'll do our best with you guys. That is the challenge, in that they're with us the entire time. But because of that, we are in this constant state of then needing to provide professional development and learning. I think, maybe it was Sharon who mentioned, I think our instructional coaches are really gonna be critical to this. They'll be boots on the ground in the building to continue to provide responsive, really kind of instruction to the teachers on any changes that we need to make. So, yeah, it's not stagnant.
Gina, you got, go ahead, I got some more questions, so go ahead.
Mr. President?
Yes Gina?
So I have, I have one question slash suggestion, and it's not for necessarily an answer today, but ongoing. And that would be, I would encourage the committee to define their metrics and measures of success, such that at the next time we take a look at this as a board, we have the understanding of what were the expectations, how did we compare to those expectations, how are we continuing to measure? And what does that success then ultimately look like for our students and for our community?
Yeah, great question, suggestion, that I'll add as another piece of the work that will take place next year with the committee. Currently, we have our strategic plan and the goals therein to guide our work in terms of increasing the achievement of our students in reading. That might look more precise as the committee meets next year to define that. And certainly, that's that monitor and refine year, where we'll get that information queued up so that we're reporting that back out to the board.
Rich, do you have further questions?
Yes. I want to go back to Gina's comment, though. I think what I'd be looking for is, what are, because I was gonna say, hey, she asked my question. But really, it's, I would expect maybe by, if you're asking us to spend one point six or whatever million, you already have your so what? These are the measures that we're going to measure for success, these are the expectations of what we expect to see out of our students already garnered. Now, you can come up with afterwards, you know, how we're gonna measure that or how we're gonna show that, but I would expect if you're already recommending this program, you already have in mind, these are the four things, five things, two things, whatever, we're gonna measure that, this is why this is the best program, and here's how we're measuring that, that success.
Yeah, we, we did, SWOT analysis was one of the activities that we did to kind of unearth those things that we wanted to make sure, you know, were pieces present in our new resource. We're gonna harvest some of that information to really refine what those specific things are that we're looking for in terms of growth. I would also, though, argue that our strategic plan and moving forward should include, continue to include information that kind of helps guide all of our curriculum adoptions and, and growth in student achievement.
Maybe, I'm, I'm sorry, but maybe I'm still not, I'm not understanding the response, because I guess what I'm looking for, if you're asking us to spend money-
Yeah.
Right? Then these are the measures of why we figure this will address these deficiencies.
Right.
This is how we're going to see that success or the so what of that investment.
Yeah, right.
Right, so it's, it's really, what are the KPIs? What are the key performance that we should see as a result of this investment?
Yep.
Right? That's what we're looking for. Now, if you're choosing this program, you have to have in mind already, these are some of those measures that we're looking for, and this program is going to best address those measures. So I'm looking for is, what are those measures? What is the expected outcome of this investment over time, right? I fully expect that in year one, we'll see maybe some things year two, but in year three, four, we're running and this is what the expectation, or what we should expect to see as a result of this investment.
So that is part of our work plan for next year with the committee, I hear what you're saying. Have we identified areas in which we want to grow? Yes, have we formalized them in terms of goals? We have not, that's-
So I guess, how are you, how, how can you substantiate saying this program is going to address, if you don't know what you're addressing, because to me, it sounds like you don't know what you're addressing, because you're not, you're not saying these are the measures that we have, or these are the objectives, end state objectives that we should expect. Then how could you come to us and recommend that we spend one point six million dollars and say, well, spend it and then we'll figure out what success will look like at some point in the future? That's what I'm hearing, I don't think you're saying that, but that's what I'm hearing right now.
Okay.
If I could jump in, Becky, just a couple of pieces. Again, one point six million dollars over a six-plus-year period. And as a part of the measurement tools that they did share, looking at the Illinois Assessment of Reading and looking for growth in that achievement score, as well as the MAP reading score for our students, K through five. Additionally, what Becky was recommending, and Becky did say there is more to come. But the other thing that she is referencing, sorry, is the strategies under the student achievement section of the strategic plan. And, and she dialed down into those, increasing the percentage of students who meet or exceed growth in reading. And she has where they are in those strategies at this point, and this, this curriculum would help expand on that. They have the expanding differentiated instructional practices, decreasing the performance gap for identified students in subgroups, and for the all-student population in literacy, as well as math. And then elevating the student college and career readiness, increased percentage of students, again, it's more of a math one, but some of what Becky is referencing is, are those specific strategies in the strategic plan, but with more defined goals to come.
Thank you, Lori. Let's see, the next question I had is, it is a one-time investment, so it's not spread out over six years, it's a one-time investment, right? Stacy or Becky, right, that we'd be making in twenty-four, I assume?
For six years' worth of materials?
Oh, yeah, no, I get that, I get that, but it's not spread out over six years, it's, it's a one-time investment right away. Absolutely, no, I get, I just wanted to clarify that question. So if this is a phased approach, right, kind of going back to the cost of the program, when does our current curriculum expire?
So our current curriculum will sunset at the end of next year.
Okay, so that's twenty-five?
So, yeah.
So this won't be fully implemented till twenty-seven?
No, it'll fully be implemented in twenty-five, twenty-six. So- With all K-five students.
Well, so full implementation for all K-five is twenty-six, twenty-seven, if I'm understanding the slide, maybe I don't understand what implementation is, so.
Implementation years one and two.
Is twenty-five, twenty-six, if slide seven, if I'm gonna go to slide seven, maybe I just misreading this.
So, implementation year one is in twenty-five, twenty-six, and then in year two, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, okay, so it's not a staggered, it's everyone gets it in twenty-five?
Correct, the only stagger, just as, just as a point of clarification, is next year.
Is the kindergarten?
Kindergarten and committee members, correct.
Okay, so everyone gets it in twenty-five?
Correct.
And you have a, so, okay, everyone gets it in twenty-five, and then so the two-year implementation process is just the timing it takes to do, fully adopt, yeah, the lack of better terms, okay.
It's fully adopted in that first year, we're saying, and then there's a second year that everybody is doing this again, right? That will continue to provide professional learning and support.
Okay. Is there something else, other than the eight bullets you have on what this HMH reading is, that we can, more comprehensive, that we can look at or understand and read, other than the eight bullets you guys listed, that you can share?
Sure, we can probably share with Lori some information, and certainly direct you to the publisher's website to take a look at some additional information.
Well, whatever you guys use to formulate this is the best thing, if you have some kind of packet of information, that would be great to read on what the, what the program is. Oh, maybe a final question, so overall, we're tending toward a more digital type of process, and this seems book-based, not saying bad or good, I'm just wondering, is, you know, kids lose books, those types of things, so is this truly a book-based with some?
Yeah, it's-
Or is this, how does this integrate with, you know, one-for-one and all those other things?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it has digital resources, but we're gonna, we lean heavily into the print-based materials, too. There's a lot of research out there behind, especially early reading, and being able to look at hard copies of information to learn to read. There's manipulatives that students will be using, whether it's the magnetic letters or other pieces of information. So, yeah, it isn't, I, I can say for sure, it is not completely digital. But there are digital resources, both for students and for our teachers.
That's all I have, thank you, thank you all.
All right, thank you, and I, I have a couple of questions, if we can keep going.
Yeah, sure.
And thank you for, the board has a lot of interest in the curriculum.
Yes.
So, one question, there's a lot of conversation about the payment and the six years, and so, thinking about the longevity of the investment, as we move through those six years in the contract, would there be additions, would we get those? So we pay upfront, is it just whatever's current, that's what we get each year, do they ship, make a new? We're not getting six years of books-
No.
Right, in twenty-four, right, like, could there be additions, or no, is that not really a thing?
You mean like an updated edition you're talking about? Yeah, I think actually Sharon had a conversation with the publishers about that, because, yeah, we, we know the world of publishing and, and how that goes.
So, yes, many, many conversations about the six years, yes. So we are, they're dedicated, I, I had the same concern you did. We will have updated resources throughout our adoption process. Also, it, it, if our numbers fluctuate, rise higher, we are still allocated the consumable resource. So it's, they're making a commitment to us as well, that each year, they will fulfill whatever consumable and digital aspect that we need. I will say too, Rich, I wanted to address just the one comment about the digital aspect, and Amy and Corinne were part of the pilot, so I know it's in the, upfront of their mind, too. HMH was very appealing to us because of what was offered digitally as well, in addition to the print, and, and the ease of use of that digital site, that teachers can access their teaching materials, students can access digital books, and there's just, again, that lift of helping teachers efficiently instruct students in the area of literacy. So I wanted to add that, because I know you guys are probably thinking that as well, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that, and please don't get me wrong, I like reading the newspaper in print. I don't know, I can't do it online, I need that, you know, so I'm all a print guy, I just want to make sure that there's a balance, because I think, not being an educator, but I think there's something to, you know, a kid looking at this, flipping a page, going to, you know, doing whatever, sitting down, that can't be seen digitally. So I, I like that portion, thank you.
Another, I wanted to, I've heard, I heard you say it, but I wanted to highlight it or confirm it. So, I mean, when you come to us as a committee, you're presenting, we're talking about a financial item, right? A curriculum, a physical product, or something we're gonna spend money on, right? But I also heard you talk about, and if you want to comment further, that this resource isn't just about the curriculum, like the writing on the page or on electronically, but the shifts in teaching, right? I, I don't know if you want to comment further on that?
Thank you for that, because that is a big part of our, our particular program review process. It's very strategically called a program review process, not a curriculum review process. While in this case, we determined it was necessary to switch to a new resource, it was because we felt like we needed those tools for our teachers to elevate their practices. So the shifts in practices is really, I think, what will end up being incredibly impactful for our students. And those were, will be the kinds of things that we'll continue to provide professional learning on. And that's really our focus for next year, too. We'll train on the resource in the spring before teachers start, but before they get, for those of you who've ever used a teacher's manual, when you get those new materials, it's kind of exciting, you get this box and all these different materials. But you can get pretty caught up in, where do I find the resources for advanced learners? Where do I find, you know, differentiation guides? Before teachers engage in that, we want to make sure that they're strong in their instructional practices and any shifts. We did the same thing with math, where we spent time on those instructional practices first. And I think we're already starting to see some really nice evidence of those practices continuing, even with the new curriculum this year.
And, so I have some other comments and questions, and for me, these were things that if I, if I had a print or version, I would be highlighting, and may, maybe they're worth extra commentary, but first of all, again, Sharon, you mentioned it, the broadly representative committee, and especially the principals, that all the principals, and we know time is a valuable resource, and, and sometimes we divide and conquer, but that they all made that commitment is pretty special. I wanted to, you also mentioned, highlighted the core beliefs, and I saw just as, I don't know if this is the right word, but strong correlation to the strategic plan, it just, it really resonated, and there's a clear centering of the student as I went through those, that was so satisfying. I also noticed, I want to call out, the interconnectingness across disciplines and the transferable skills, so that I hear that, well, this is, we're not siloed, that this is going to impact all across the building and what the kids are studying. I appreciated the expansive description of the positive learning environment and the inclusion of classroom libraries as an explicit item, which to me called back to the recommendations from the curriculum equity audit back in 2022. I don't know if that's fair, you can call me, tell me if that's true.
That's accurate, yeah.
But you also mentioned a dedicated time for reflection for both the teacher and student, as a part of the instructional process, not just an aspiration, but that, that's going to be built in to what, what happens day-to-day. I have a question related to professional development. In the core beliefs you mentioned, relevant, ongoing, and job embedded, could you say a little bit more about that? What is job embedded? What could that look like? I know you're still going to develop it, but high level.
Yeah, we've got some ideas, yeah.
So, as you, as I stated, our committee was representative not only of classroom teachers, so we had 15 classroom teachers participate on the committee, and we had a representation of primary and intermediate in those classroom teachers. In addition to that, our literacy interventionists, our multilingual teachers, our special education teachers, all of this new literacy curriculum will impact all areas, and so we wanted those teachers to come on board and to be a part of the learning with us, and experiencing the pilot and the, just the committee's experience, and also have that lens and be able to weigh in if they saw roadblocks, if they saw things that were challenges. It was extremely helpful, and they were as dedicated as our classroom teachers were to being a part of the pilot, visiting classrooms, co-teaching, et cetera. The job embedded aspect is, we will look at other types of training that we can provide people who are outside of our classroom, teaching staff, that will benefit from learning about some of the science of reading, some of the best practices in literacy, high-impact teaching strategies. We truly believe that all of these things are so interconnected, that that would be somewhat, we don't want to just silo and just have classroom teachers experience professional learning. So, that's a big commitment in our department, we work very cohesively and collectively to ensure that that happens. And so that professional learning is really important, that that was part of those core literacy belief statements.
And so, keeping with that theme, and I just want to ask it explicitly, so when we talk about, you're in the professional development phase, either the whole phase or later professional development, sounds like staff will be leading a lot of it, will it be consultants as well assisting, or?
Yes, so there will be, the companies will provide some professional learning, and that's written into our quote as well, that we will be able to receive some. Becky referenced, really for us, the re, the importance of our teachers having access to really strong professional learning that impacts their instructional practices, that is really where, I'll say, and I say it when I visit teachers, where our magic happens, frankly. And so, that focus is what are those core instructional practices? We are fleshing out some of the professional learning, we already have a commitment from the company that will provide some resource training, but as a department of student learning, we're crafting and developing. As soon as we, the committee just voted, by the way, it was a big day for us in April, so this is hot off the presses, and we really, I know Becky has tirelessly over many weekends, well, the one weekend she had to get everything together, and we really wanted to align so that this, we could bring this to you tonight, and then to the next board meeting. So, we will definitely share all of our professional learning plans as soon as we have all of those in alignment and ready to go for you to, if you want to know more about that, we're happy to do so.
If I could just add to what Sharon is saying, that this is a big role of our instructional coaches, that new position that is starting in the district, that they can be getting trained, they can be in classrooms partnering with teachers, providing ongoing professional development embedded right in their jobs, as well as those positions that are outside of the classroom.
I want to just finish up my comments by focusing on the recommended resource, and know when I'm highlighting these and the things I've already said, it's just to honor the work that the committee has done, and again, emphasizing what you said, is that it's evidence-based, and really appreciating that it provides diverse and culturally responsive materials, I noted that. I was wondering if you could say a little bit more about the connected text sets? And, so my question is, as an outsider is, so are those, well, maybe, maybe that's enough, rather than stumbling through another question, could you just say, explain those a little more?
Yeah, you're dancing on dangerous territory, because once you get me talking about literacy and the deep details, it might be a long night for you, so I will try to keep it brief. But connected text sets really is just the ability for our teachers to have access to a connected nonfiction and a fiction text. So, that is, we, there's research around how strong that is for a student to experience both those correspondingly. So, the connected text set, you'll see in different contexts, the meaning, typically it's in an HMH, it's that we'll have some connected topics that relate in a fictional text and in a nonfictional setting as well, the text that connects. Also, knowledge building is a, is a big emphasis of thinking about how we can build children's broader knowledge on a topic, and having texts that will help get that job done efficiently.
Thank you. And then, thank you, and finally, I just, I'll quote it, was considerations for learners with multicultural, advanced, and specialized needs, which seems so great, and it seems to me that that would, teachers that are serving those students won't have to be creating and adapting a different material, and it makes their work more efficient, more aligned with what's happening all across the curriculum, so...
Yes, thank you for highlighting that. The Shah Polos, who's the, our director for DEI, she, when she was doing the scorecard, she actually just did a presentation at a committee noting some of the unique features, too. The teachers saw it when they were teaching, there's a lot of call-outs for those things, but she's very dedicated to providing professional learning, those don't get lost. There's a lot to look at, as Becky said, when you get new materials, but we want to make sure that our teachers have the expertise to look at the resource and know, here's, here's a great tip for me to use with this type of student or learner. So we're doing some work with that.
Yeah, well, thank you again for all the work, and the many questions you have is just a tribute to the work, a lot to chew on and a lot to think about, so thank you again, appreciate your time and everything.
Sorry, Mr. President, I just have, yeah, please, go ahead. Sorry, just to clarify, I think throughout the document, additional person, slide six, so I just want to make clear, are you also going to be coming to us saying you need an additional person, or is it what the instructional coaches are going to be doing? So I heard it a couple of times, you kept saying, let's see...
Is it Laura Valchenco, who?
I don't know the name, you just said, hey, we're going to have someone, an additional person, so I just want to make sure there's no, no new staff costs, other than the instructional coaches that's being asked for, so it's just, it was probably just what I heard, play on words, whatever, that's all.
You are correct, we're not adding additional staff for the program.
Well, thank you again, Dr. Fitzpatrick, for your time this evening and all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on to our next agenda item, note that according to the agenda, we are still ahead of schedule. So, next is business and finance, and we have an information item, a presentation of the 2324 tentative amended budget. So, Ms. Malik, if you could share the information with the board.
So, I don't have an actual slideshow presentation, because the only changes in the amended budget from the original budget the board approved in September, there are no changes to revenues nor expenditures, the changes are only transfers between funds. The impetus for this is, at the time we did the budget, it did not anticipate an abatement of the debt service tax levy, and in doing that abatement, the board also then approved a transfer from working cash for 1.9 million to cover the debt service payment. So, that, with the state budget form, there's very specific cells you have to use to make transfers, I didn't have any budget numbers in those cells, so I have to amend the budget to reflect the transfer of the 1.9 million out of working cash and into the debt service fund. Since I'm doing that, we are also working on our food service, as you know, we've talked some in the past, during 2020 through 21 and 22, the federal government reimbursed the, they paid 100% for all of the meals served to kids for one whole year, they also reimbursed that at a much higher rate. So, we've built up some significant funds through our food service program, which officially is not supposed to be a profit center, so we are working on a plan to spend down some of those balances, so that we don't get ourselves in trouble with the federal national school lunch program auditors. Part of the, part of what we do with student fees, we didn't propose increased lunch rates for next year to use some of that, so in the amended budget, I've added a transfer from the food service reserves to the IMRF and FICA Medicare funds to move dollars out of the food service balance into the FICA Medicare funds to cover the pension costs associated with the food service staff. Those are the only changes of the budget, again, a transfer from working cash to debt service, and a transfer from the ed fund to IMRF and social security.
Thank you, Stacy. And before I open it up to questions, and then, so this will be an action item, right? This is the first step?
So, an amended budget does require the exact same process as the official budget, so we will have to do a public hearing and then a final adoption. If I can get the, yes, so there, either the May or June meeting, depending on, I was planning for June and then realized it might be possible to do May, but I have to get the advertisement in the paper about the public hearing. If that happens, it'll be on May, otherwise it'll be on June. It just needs to happen before the end of the year, so that we can do the transfer.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Stacy on this? Okay, thank you, Stacy. We're going on to personnel and planning this evening, so the next item is an action item, motion please.
I move that the Board of Education's request to be amended to create a reservation of the rest of the resignation agreement.
Thank you, Rich, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Welcome, Dr. Kay, if you could please present the information on resignation agreement three.
Yes, thank you. Before you this evening, I am presenting this resignation agreement on behalf of Melissa Reyes, who is interested in resigning from her position, with the conditions written into the agreement regarding letters of reference and future employment inquiries. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement as presented. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Kay. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenichek?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scott Palato?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. On to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent report, and the first item is the Freedom of Information Act report, so Dr. Bine, if you could please review those FOIA items with us.
Thank you, there have been three FOIA requests since our last meeting, and those have all been responded to with the dates shown.
Thank you, Dr. Bine. The next item is the second reading of policies and an action item, if I could have a motion, please.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Dr. Bine, if you could review those reading of policies for the board.
Thank you, there are no changes from the first reading copies that we brought you, but I'm happy to answer any questions on these. These are policies representing several areas of our policy manual, section two, four, five, six, seven, and eight, so everything but one, pretty much, and three. As you know, through the process, this did first go to the policy committee, and then came to the board as first reading, again, there's no changes since we brought them for the first reading.
Any questions from the board? Rich?
Mr. President, I do have a question on a series of them, and sorry, I wasn't here for the policy committee, and we just saw these last time, so please bear with me. So, I do have only seven, not seven questions, but only questions on seven, so I'll kind of work through that. If we can go to policy 252, or 2:52, this would be a new one, right, where we're extending the courtesy, allowing current and former board members, who are parents, legal guardians of students, to present their diploma if they're graduating students. I know, I, I just looking for why former, I'm not questioning the, whether we should or shouldn't, but, I mean, that could mean, you know, someone that is no longer a board member for five years, six years, saying, hey, you know, my kid is now, and I would like to present that diploma the way it's written, so I'm just questioning the former, because I know we've done, the current board members have done that, but the former.
Yeah, we have done both, we just haven't had this formalized in policy, but in practice, we have had former board members and current board members, when they have a graduating eighth grader, have the ability to come up and hand the diploma to their graduate. We just decided that we wanted to formalize this in policy, so that that practice didn't get lost as people changed. But, so, again, that was the decision, we talked about that at the policy committee, exactly like he's asking, what does that mean about former, and again, if that, if a former, according to this policy that you would adopt, current or former board member who has an eighth grader graduating would be invited to have the opportunity to hand their diploma to their child.
Dr. Bine, and...
Or grandchild.
No, well, it says who are parent, or legal guardians, but parents, key being parents, so...
So, I'll add, I was there for that discussion, and, Rich, to your question, I think we considered, like, should there be a window of time for a former member, and I think we agreed that there's probably a practical window there anyway, could, could it be a long time? Sure, but we figured in practice, we didn't have to memorialize that here, and that those situations would be few and far between.
Okay, just wondering. Next one is 2150. So, within this one, we're adding two more committees, committees three and four, so we're now adding a new committee, parent-teacher advisory committee and the behavioral interventions committee. So, again, not being there, why?
So, actually, we're re-establishing, re-formalizing the establishment of these committees, so IASB has had some suggestions for us, where a few years ago, we took those two off, they've now, as we've checked back in with them, saying, yes, those actually are, continue to be legally required committees that a school district must have. We currently have those two, although the format of them can be changed from year to year. So, we added our individual district's insurance committee and policy committee. The parent-teacher advisory committee, over the years, we have used the Arlington Heights Council of PTAs in that role, it doesn't have to be that, but that is what we have used. And we do have currently a behavioral committee of staff in the district, and so that is going, whether that's in policy or not, but state law now requires that you have a behavioral interventions committee, so we're memorializing, I guess, that... So we're memorializing, I guess, that committee that we have in policy.
Just a question on that, so I just have a question then regarding the sentence there about what are the, what the parent teacher? At the parents of the students, right?
Yeah, yeah. So what you're referencing, we cannot do, right? We can never tell a, even a teacher committee about the behavior of a student that they're not directly responsible for. This is the legally required language, and it's more saying that this committee is going to review the procedures of administering medications. So that is required now that they have that, that they're going to review our reciprocal reporting agreements that we have with the police department and with other school districts. Not those individual situations, but the reciprocal agreements of them. Yeah, so some of our surfaces we maintain, some of our surfaces our Park District does. Any agreement we have with the Park District must align with our board policy. So then we'll have an action item to do almost, 500 feet, I mean, I look at the 500 feet, that's a lot, that's a long distance. And so we're going to now be coming back to the Park District. So let me just think out loud here for a second. We don't apply pesticides-
During school hours.
During school hours when students or staff are present. Where children are typically present. So those pesticides are only applied maybe in the summer or on a rare weekend and meet the requirements so that they are not wet or accessible when students are here. The Park District, as you also probably have been aware, is actually piloting at one of our schools, a organic, non-pesticide way of treating that field.
So just a question in terms of the process. It says, may resign during the school term in order to accept the, with the current consent of the board. But somewhere I thought I read that, oh, there he goes. A teacher may resign outside a school term if the teacher provides a written notice to the secretary of the board. So that would be to Kevin. But I'm wondering, should that really be to personnel? Would it be more appropriate from a procedural standpoint that it go to personnel versus to Kevin?
We can double check on that, but honestly, I believe that, right, that is our practice, that it goes to personnel. It does, it's not approved until the secretary of the board and the president sign after the board approves the personnel report. I'll have to check. This is very likely one of the situations where in law it says or designated to the administration on behalf of the board.
Yeah, because I'm just worried about it, like, a timeline, at least 30 calendar days. So, you know, I understand it may go to personnel, but if it ever gets to Kevin, it never happens. So that needs to be clarified then.
Pull that one if the board likes. And sorry, if I could just go back one more time as I read it, right? Written notice to the secretary of the board at least 30 calendar days prior to the first student attendance day of the following school year. So they can provide that to personnel, and personnel then brings it to the board, in which the secretary signs, when they sign the personnel, when they sign on the personnel plan. I don't disagree, but again, the words are, even that resignation needs to be given to the secretary of the board. It's not, it's not on something. So here, outside the school term, if the teacher provides a written notice to the secretary of the board, that means that's not the personnel plan. It's the written notice that I want to resign. Is the board comfortable that we would add written notice to the secretary of the board or designee? Yeah. Thank you.
I think, well-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, did, did we get a show of hands? I was looking at the, so my question then, and I'm sorry, we're kind of delving into, like, a policy committee discussion, but I, I just want to understand, Rich, where you're going, like, so what would happen? What, what do you foresee the jeopardy we would be in? What, what would be the situation that could happen based on it as written here?
So two things. If, if the secretary of the board never rescues it in a timely basis, the way it's written, the 30-day clock doesn't start. All right, so at least 30 calendar days, all right? So if someone submits it- On, on the 31st day, right? So I think 31st days prior to personnel. Then it takes two weeks to get to Michael. They're, they would not be able to be, because they're in violation of the policy. They submit it in 30 days. And so that's, it's a, it's just a technical procedure, I think. You know, whichever way, just adding or designate or personnel, because that's where it's-
I think Dr. Kay has entered the chat.
Yeah. So, thank you. The sentence that has the 30 calendar days prior to the first student attendance day, so every year, so if we start on August 25th, 30 days before that is when it needs to be given.
To Kevin.
Currently, the language says to the secretary of the board.
Right.
Correct. So I believe if we add designate, then personnel is a safe person to get it to.
Yep.
So, so first, first, can I, can I get nods of approval? If, what is the board's will on that? Like, adding at or designate? Okay? Looks like we got a majority, so, Dr. Bine, how do we move this to approval? What would you suggest?
So when we, when we, did we already do a motion in a second? So after we've gone through all the questions, we can amend the motion to approve as submitted with the correction to 5:210.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Bine. And Rich, you had more questions?
Yes, yes. Next one is 5:250, and again, this one is more-
And thank you, Dr. Kay.
If you go down to part two, or I guess page two toward the bottom there, the child extended bereavement, bereavement leave? And I think it's truly just an extract right out of what they're, you know, what press plus for everyone, but since we already employ more than 250 individuals on a full-time basis, you know, why don't we just, again, if these are supposed to be more toward us specifically, just get rid of that, because we already know we, at this point in time, we have no, no thought of getting below that, just get rid of that and say, hey, here it is, this is what they get. So changing that sentence to really be, you know, continual benefits to all terms, all terms, employees are entitled to 12 weeks of unpaid leave within one year after the employee notifies the district of the loss. It's just more cleaning up the policy than having superfluous words in there that really don't add any meaning to it.
So that is a possibility. As you, as the board knows, in some policies, they ask questions. This is one of them, and when we reply to IASB questions, this question says, how many full-time employees does the district employ? And we checked, more than 250 employees. And, and that's where IASB would say, having this in is not hurting anything, but if the board prefers, you could take out from, anything from accordingly, you need the first couple of sentences. You could take accordingly, if the district employs 250 or more employees on a full-time basis, et cetera, et cetera. You can take out everything after accordingly.
Between the commas.
Up to and, you start the sentence with and, or A, A, and capital A. That's where you start it.
An employee may elect to substitute other forms of leave towards the employees entitled for leave provided under the child's-
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Lori, you, you take out everything from accordingly to Q1.
Between the commas.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Great.
There's a comma after accordingly.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. You take-
The comma.
Everything through Q1 and then start by capitalizing.
Capitalizing.
Capitalizing of and. And get rid of everything else. We are, we have more than 250, so just cleaning it up, the language.
Okay.
No, it just cleans up the language.
If, if you want to take out that phrasing?
That's the board? What, what do you guys think? Okay?
Because you really don't, honestly, if you're going to take that out?
You're saying not to take out?
Not necessary.
Okay. Okay. I think the board's interested in keeping it.
Yeah, but, but Brian, remember, we've talked about it a lot of times, is even if whatever's covered in the, in the policy committee can then be recovered here, that's part of the process.
I get that, but I-
And that's why I said, I apologize upfront, I wasn't in that session.
Yeah, I get it, but in between the information item and when we're voting on the already written, would have been the time to have this. That was hence why we created the policy committee. So I appreciate your apology, and I appreciate your due diligence on this, but if you miss a policy meeting, bringing conversation into an open board meeting to make material changes to policies that have already been reviewed in an information item and should be voted on quickly, negates the point of creating the policy committee. So I'm fine with it, but let's not make this a habit, because that's the whole point we created the committee, was to avoid this.
I agree.
Avoid redlining stuff that we should be voting on, because we trusted and empowered our policy committee to do the work for us. Now we're doing it here.
Okay. I, I hear you, Brian. The policy committee process that the board agreed to even talks about bringing it back here, in the first reading, in the second reading, bringing it all back. So I, I appreciate that, but that doesn't minimize the opportunity to talk about a point.
But it should be between the informational meeting and the action meeting. It's in between there, is all I'm saying.
In the interest of time, Rich, if we can continue with your questions.
Yeah, yep, yep, we're almost done. So really in 660, so, well, I'm just interested in better understanding, because this is the only area that we added instruction as determined by the superintendent or designate for curriculum, for these specific sections of curriculum, versus all the other points do not have that specific words. So I'm wondering, again, policy committee or whomever was there, why did we choose to add those words?
So again, that's wording that is, anything in blue or green, anything in green or red comes from IASB as they update laws. So for example, what you're referencing, if you look at page three of four on 660, press plus one, amended by Public Act 103422, requires the school board to determine the minimum amount of instructional time. The sample policy complies by delegating this responsibility to the superintendent or designate.
And I'm just trying to understand why.
Rich, do you have a, do you have a suggestion on change or no?
No, I don't, no, no, there's no suggestion, so I'm just wondering explicitly, because it does, it does then provide, or within that implies that then the superintendent, so Lori or, you know, whomever, then will have to now list off and at least talk to us about how much instructional time we're providing to this. That's what's kind of implied with this. So it's more, I don't fully understand the law, and so Lori, help me here, but I'm just wondering why we would, why there is this type of focus on this area. I'm not, I'm not questioning it, saying I dispute it, I'm just wondering, because we should understand our own policies.
So the law is saying that the board sets the minimum amount of instructional time, right? So, but that the superintendent or designate determine for all of these topics in number 12, for example, how we address them, what type of instruction we use, where all of these things must be covered, but the superintendent and designate determine how, within the amount of instructional time that the board determines as a whole.
So then would we be expecting a readout as to what that determination is?
I would say, do we come to you and tell you exactly how many chapters or time?
No, that's a question mark, not a, not a statement.
But what you can know is that we do, we teach all of these required topics. So all of these, not even just number 12, all are required topics. So all of them are covered somewhere in our early childhood through eighth grade curriculum.
Okay, all right. Last one, 7270. So my question here is the whole addition of the oxygen tanks, the undesignated oxygen tanks. And so this is really more about if we have it, and I, and so it's more of a question, do we have students that require it, and do we have then undesignated tanks? Because here it says, permits the district maintaining, back in the press plus one, if districts are maintaining special educational facilities to maintain a supply of undesignated oxygen tanks, blah, 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 blah. So I'm just, I, I don't know, do we have special educational facilities that require undesignated oxygen tanks for the use for students, not, not for the use of, like, chemistry or things of that nature? This is specifically for student use.
So yes, we will, just like that. Yes, we will, just like we have done previously with undesignated asthma medications, undesignated EpiPens, that this now will require us to have a supply of undesigned, that means there's not a specific student with a medical need for this device, but we do have students who have specific needs, and then we have those for them, but that we now will have a supply of undesignated oxygen tanks, as long as we are able to, what is the word I'm looking for? As long as we are able to access them, to get them, they are available, that we now will be required to have those available.
So then how do we define a special educational facilities?
Anywhere we provide special education. So all of our schools.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Similar to what we had to do during the pandemic, we have to find a physician who is willing to write a prescription for oxygen tanks for undesignated use.
So we had one, one policy, and Dr. Bine, you had the suggested motion amendment, so if Kevin-
I would suggest that someone, whoever made the motion-
Kevin made the motion, so if Kevin-
To simply amend it to include the additional phrasing on 5:210.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the policies as presented with the exception. as presented with the exception of policy five, two, ten.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please? Thank you, Rich. Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Faso?
Yes.
Olenicek?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Scapolato?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes. Before we leave this topic, I just want to note, I mean, we had, there's a little bit of a process discussion there. And I don't, I want all of my colleagues to know that I heard that. And, and Dr. Byn, that could either, I'm going to put this out there and you can confirm, or, but that could either be something we could revisit in the policy committee. I mean, things come up, right? We, we want to honor, you know, the information that, like, in this instance, Rich, you were seeking, or material changes, but also the efficiency that we're trying to incorporate by having a policy committee. Might, doesn't necessarily have to be a, a long discussion, but maybe we could at least have a, have a conversation so that we all know what the expectation is, so. Does that, does that work for you, Rich, for the policy committee? Okay, thank you. All right, so Lana, we have no speakers for our second community input. So, we are on to our future agenda items. And this is where I ask if there's any new topics that have been previously discussed with Dr. Byn.
Not at this point.
Okay. And nothing else for us to review, Dr. Byn, in that topic? Okay. All right, so we are not going into, back into closed session. So, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, moved.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second. Thank you, Rich. Lana, would you please call the vote?
Faso?
Yes.
Olenicek? Nierman?
Yes.
Scapolato?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.